I'm just looking at the time and who's here. Looks like.
Definitely got a quorum. At least for GBOS, I think Kevin's here from LUC, but that's it so far. And other people might join as we go.
Yeah, I think Diane is on her way down, Kyle. She's on the highway right now.
Kevin, do you know who else may or may not be present from LUC?
I have not heard from Shannon O'Brien. I can shoot a text afterward to see if she'll be here. But yeah, that's all I know.
Okay, thank you. There I see Diana. And Jennifer. All right. Think we could go ahead, Kyle, then?
Yeah, you're all set. I get your recording, so anytime you want to start.
Okay, great. Thank you. I will go ahead and begin December 20th, 2021, GBOS LUC Joint Meeting. At 6:02 via Microsoft Teams. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. Call to order at 6:03 PM. This is Brianna Sullivan, Co-Chair and Parks and Recreation Supervisor and Cemetery. I'll start with roll call. Go ahead, Mike.
Mike Hedges, Land Use Supervisor and Co-Chair, no disclosures.
Thank you. Amanda?
Amanda Sassy, Road Supervisor.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, Wind Guard Public Safety.
Guy?
Guy Wade, Fire Department.
Thank you. And any disclosures from any GBOS members? I don't see any hands raised. And LUC members in attendance. Kevin?
Hi, Kevin McDermott, Land Use Chair.
Diana?
Hi, Diana Stan, Land Use Vice Chair.
Great. And anyone else on the call that would like to identify themselves? Okay, don't see any.
Brianna, this is Kevin. I think Shannon's planning on joining us here shortly.
Oh, here, I see her name come up. Shannon, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
We're just taking attendance, so if you could just say your name. And your role at LUC, Shannon.
Sorry, I have a call. I'm one of the chairs, co-chairs. I'm not sure what our titles are.
Thank you. That's great. It's on the record for attendance. Agenda revisions and approval, December 20th, 21 GBOS LUC Joint Meeting Agenda Approval. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Does Mike have a move to approve the agenda?
Thank you. And a second?
It's Amanda, I'll second.
Great, thank you. Announcements, the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. GBOS committees, Trails, Land Use, Public Safety and Cemetery will hold officer elections at their first regular meetings in the new year. Public comment, persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Please raise your hand if you have a public comment tonight. Anyone on the phone? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to agenda item business. Number one, discuss status of hybrid virtual and in-person meetings and return to regular meetings. Who would like to introduce this topic?
I could talk about it, or we could have, maybe it would make sense to have. It was Kyle who put together the stuff about the hybrid meeting costs.
Sure. Well, you know, the current status right now within the municipality is there's no restrictions. But we, as a community, still elect to meet virtually at this point in time. And, and so, you know, we've been talking for quite some time about what the future looks like and where the meetings will go. And I think one thing we've heard strong from the feedback through the process here is that people can still would like, at the very least, to meet hybrid. If we return the in-person and then the option for people to attend online and have that opportunity to still partake in the process. So we, well, one thing I've been working on is determining the technology that's needed to make that work. So I've been working with IT and we came up with a very basic list of items that would start us. And in particular, the first four items on here would be the basic of the basic to get us started. And basically, this would be audio and visual, mostly visual for those who are attending online with a better camera system so they can see people in the room and people talking and things like that. This is very similar with the Muni uses for their virtual meetings. Meeting with those who are in the offices or conference rooms in the municipality. And so it'd be basically a video conferencing system bundled with extended mics. We could have a center mic system and then two mics that span out to the side. So possibly for three mic pickup. And it would work nicely probably with the GBOS and then with the subcommittees. We would still have the challenges of a big room that we have to deal with. And, you know, what would be ideal, which, you know, some people have concern about is that if we could turn off the air handler. The air handler in the Girdwood room makes a lot of white noise and a lot of background noise. It's always been a complaint of the radio station when they do the GBOS meetings, how much white noise it's making. And we, during the pandemic, we've got it engineered now that we can turn off the air handler for a set period of time, anywhere up to three hours. And have it on a timer that turns it off. And we started doing that and, you know, made a big difference, especially for those who attended the meeting and had, say, hearing aids or things like that. But now that we're on this video system, it takes that white noise out and allows people to hear better because those mics can only do so much with soft talkers. And we would constantly remind people to speak up. So basically, this is what it's looking like. I did put on here a new LCD display projector. And the projector that we have here is aging out. It's really suggested that I don't buy bulbs for it anymore because they're becoming difficult to find. And we can buy a much better system that's Bluetooth and we don't have to be hardwired to it. We can, anybody can hook up to it, especially Mac computers, which we've had a large problem with. So overall, we're looking at a minimum probably of $2,000, $2,500 to get us going. And then upwards of, you know, $55,000 to $6,000. We do have a account set aside for the community room that we could use to do these upgrades. We have $75,000 in our 406 account. And we could use those funds to help fund this. So, so that's where we're at from the technology side. And really looking for direction from GBOS. If they want us to give us approval to spend those funds so we can activate them out of the capital account.
Thank you, Kyle. Did you say 75K in the 406 account?
Correct. We have 75, 70, yeah, 75,000 in a capital 406 account just designated for the community room.
Okay, and those first four numbers are the 2,500 to get us going. Do you have any insight on how long it would take to get any of that to Alaska?
We do know it's available right now. We're on freezing, we're on a spending freeze right now. We can't spend any money till January 1st because it's the end of our fiscal year. So we would make the purchase right away in January and then hopefully it'd be here in, say, two weeks.
Okay, I see some questions. Go ahead, Mike.
I do think Guy was first in the list. Got number one next to him.
I did see his hand as well. Guy, are you ready?
Yeah, I am, yeah. Kyle, have you talked to the radio station and all this compatible with their gear?
What would be ideal is that we have an audio video conference system that picks up people really well in the room so that they wouldn't have to go through all the setup they do. What they really love right now about Teams and being virtual is that they just call in and they tag right into the meeting. They'll do that tonight. Instead of coming over here and spending two and a half hours or two hours, two and a half hours of their day setting up and taking down to get everything set up. And as you guys well know, it's a, it's a, it's a snake of audio lines that runs through the room to get that thing set up. So, so it would be determined, they would have to see what it sounds like because we don't really know what it's going to be like once, until we get the system in there and how it works with this big room and how people are talking and how well it can pick up, you know, quiet talkers versus louder talkers, things like that.
So during this process, we'll integrate those guys with us so the public can be part of it?
Correct, yeah. We will work with the radio station to, especially for the GBOS meetings, to include them. So they have been helpful, but what the biggest aspect is, is getting audio back into the computer and the computer recognizing it as audio for the program like Teams we're working with. So that's always a challenge.
Thanks.
Mike?
Yeah, I was gonna ask him, it's a similar kind of question. The microphone and video components, how much time or how difficult is it going to be to? Are they meant to be left set up? Are they something which sit in the room? Or are they something we're going to have to sort of set up, take down? And how difficult and easy, or easy would that be?
They're fairly easy. They'll almost look like a phone conference system. And so we would just probably have a dedicated cart that we keep everything in and then we roll it out. Because, you know, we have different configurations for each of our different meetings. In the sense of like Trails, you know, most of the time we make a horseshoe with those tables or a round table versus GBOS when we have more of the front tables. LUC is that way too, but not as much set up there. So, so depending on how it goes, you know, we would have to configure things to make it work better. Your ultimate goal is just really good sound and pickup of people's voices for those online.
So we can think of this as kind of, you know, like a phone conference system with one primary mic and some remote mics? And then the cable with a handheld microphone as well?
Yeah, the way it's been described to me, it's a phone, it's a phone video conference system with three mics and the main, you know, the main hubs in the middle.
Right. And where does the camera go on this?
And the camera will be, we would probably figure out a station where we can run it and then it has a remote so we can turn it and focus towards people and things like that.
Right, thanks.
Kevin, your hand is up.
Thanks, Brianna. One question I have, at least that's come up in Land Use, less of an issue for GBOS, is counting the votes, you know, through a hybrid system. And, you know, last month at, or last week at LUC, we tried poll. And I think did that at Trails and that seemed to work pretty well. My concern though is like when it gets to be a close vote and if it, you know, if it's something that, I guess we need more verification on. I understand it's advisory and it's, you know, the vote's not necessarily critical. But let's think at some point, we're going to come to an issue with a really close vote. And one, you know, verifying that we're getting after it count. And then two, that's the, to me, like the part of the meetings that really kind of gum things up. Like it, you know, just takes more time. So Kyle and Margaret, I don't know if that's something that you guys have thought about, you know, moving forward with the hybrid meetings?
Well, I think what we would continue with, and we're finding success with, is this, is this poll system. And then if people can't access the poll or are unable to use the poll then we, you know, we've been raising, having people raise hands and we take their vote verbally. You know, the poll system produces us a Excel document of results with people's names tied to it. And so, you know, especially through the Trails process, we've been able to determine if people are qualified voters or not. The qualifications are much less with LUC. So we've been able to confirm that and then we have record of that. If we needed to and if the chair wanted us to, we can always pause the meeting. And then once we close that poll, we can pull down the results and tabulate them. A lot of times we're on the fly, we're moving along. We don't do that. We usually confirm the poll maybe later on the meeting or definitely in the minutes the next day or the next couple of days when they come out for it. So if we had a situation where we felt it was going to be a very tight result then yeah, maybe choice to pause the meeting for a minute and let us figure that all out for the results.
Okay, thanks, Kyle.
Thank you, Kyle. Mike?
Yeah, just following on from that last point, I think the, one of the things that is slightly uncomfortable about the polling solution is that the vote isn't really public. I mean, it's effectively anonymous until the minutes come out. You don't know who's, nobody's really stating which way they're voting. So you can't see who's voting, you can't see how people are voting, which is obviously in contrast to either a voice vote or even a hands raised in the room. So that kind of, I think that changes the dynamics somewhat, whether it's better or worse. I'm not prepared to say. I guess it depends, but it is quite different from the experience in person. I think that's very different dynamics.
So would you suggest we don't use the poll?
The problem is it's efficient. I mean, it's definitely much more efficient in going through the voice vote. And it does give a record of who said, of which we could, which could be challenged afterwards. But it's, it's not something you can kind of look at and think about at the time. Unless, you know, I suppose in very contentious things, you can actually publish, you could share the, you know, if we have some contentious thing, you could, or you have a very close vote, you could actually share that Excel spreadsheet. And people can verify that their votes recorded correctly. And that way it's public.
We can do it that way. And it's essentially what the Assembly does. They set a poll up each time when they vote and they publish their results up there. So unless they're on the phone. So, you know, so we could go through the steps if we feel it's necessary.
I guess that maybe that's the issue of if there is some very close vote, that really need, everyone needs to feel comfortable about the outcome in the meeting, that may be the approach. That makes sense. Thanks.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, that was, I think that's sort of the way I see it. You know, GBOS or the Assembly, there's a lot less votes to count most of the time. And it's, you know, at LUC or Trails where there can be, you know, dozens of votes. And, and more often than not, the, you know, the, the voting's, you know, it's either, it's like 90, 90% to 10% or unanimous. It's only on those close votes that it's an issue. And if that's the case, you know, either the board or the chair could, you know, make a call to say, okay, let's take however much time and do a roll call vote just so we know we're getting an accurate. Not that we're not getting accurate count with, with the poll, but we could make sure that, you know, for instance, where there's two people sharing a computer, you know, that we're getting, you know, or even, you know, we've had examples where there's a group of people in a room. And we just want to make sure we get, you know, each one of those votes tabulated, you know, particularly on the ones, the closed votes.
Do people just lose power?
Not here. Didn't have a little blink real quick though.
Okay, yeah, we just, we're okay here. I could feel that our alternator just kicked on. So I was wondering if it affected people out there.
Things seem fine this way.
Brianna, you still there?
You may have found out where the outage was. It looks like we just lost Brianna. I'll, I'll continue in her place until she gets back. Actually, I have my hand up. I'll make a comment quickly. If we move away from the specifics of the, of the equipment here into the sort of general question of hybrid virtual in person, the only consistent criticism I've heard is that with non-in-person meetings, attention is somewhat variable. We've definitely had cases where a large number of people have basically turned up to someone's house and had drink, you know, food and drink and voting has just been kind of a sideshow as part of that. And it's not clear a lot of the time that people are paying the same level of attention as they do when they're in the room. And I think that has some concern. But overall, I still think that, you know, my personal feeling is, is that online meetings have been a significant, overall have been a significant improvement even than the in-person meetings we used to have in the past. So I know we're kind of, we're focusing here on the equipment, on whether hybrid is feasible. But I think we still have kind of the general question of what our policy should be going forward. And I'm going to throw that out there and I'm aware that people have, some people have had to leave the conversation because of power problems. I guess that's, that would also be true if the power went in the room though.
Here comes Brianna. Hey, Brianna, you back?
I am.
Lose power there?
Yep, it was a, nothing turned all the way off, but it had a jump. And then I experienced a technical difficulty of having a power loss for a minute.
We were just talking about how reliable online meetings are.
All right, thank you. So I missed what Kevin was saying. That's when I dropped off.
Brianna, just to kind of recap, my concern is that, you know, I think the poll works great, it's very efficient. Just when we have a really close vote, that it, particularly at LUC and Trails, that might be when we need to move to a roll call and, and really make sure, you know, we have, I guess, you know, not just an accurate count, but we know, okay, you know, I guess more better verification of who's voting. So that was just a point I had. Otherwise, you know, I think for Trails and LUC, the poll works pretty well. And then, you know, if we go to a hybrid meeting, I guess, you know, that's when Margaret tabulates everything. We know, okay, how many people voted in the room, how many people voted in the poll? And then there'd have to be some sort of, I guess, a roll call for people that are on their phone. Right, Kyle? Because people on the phone can't really use that polling feature.
Correct. And we've been recognizing that Trails Committee to call out people on the phone and then ask for anybody, even when we have like the two people sharing a computer, we ask for the person to, you know, recognize them, to raise their hand so we can call on them.
Great, thank you. Kaylee, your hand is up.
I was just going to, just in, make a brief point in my informal documentation of this as I've gone through the Trails meeting, which we, Trails meetings, which we've had a lot of recently with a really heavy turnout, which has been really exciting. It, it really seems like the thing that slips through the cracks probably more than the vote accuracy is the eligibility. So I guess I just throw that out there, not as I'm offering a particular solution. I'm just introducing it as we're talking about sort of what are the issues. I think that is probably more of an issue than the actual count. I think the count that you guys do a pretty good job, even on the fly, as far as I've seen. Because I'm also counting at the same time. Anyway, that's it. Thanks.
And please let us know if you find somebody who isn't eligible. Because I know the next day we do audit on all the votes and try to determine from our list to see, make sure people are eligible.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Margaret, your hand is up.
I would say that something else that we've noticed since adding the polling is that it does open up the chat feature, which means that there can be side conversations that enter in there. And I think that's something that all of us could work toward is maybe some, there may be some new rules that we'll need to make as far as holding the meetings efficiently. Because those side conversations that are happening on chat are no less distracting than side conversations in the meeting. And they also aren't accessible to everyone.
Right. Thank you, Margaret, for that point. I also was thinking about all the meetings that many of us have been attending. And over the many months so far, Margaret and Kyle have done a lot of troubleshooting in great ways so that something like the poll could come up. But there is still, like, that's been, everything has been brought up, like the difference in the dynamic of having people put up their hands. You still had your idea that you were maybe going to put up your hand or you weren't. But there's the privacy. We don't know who's voting which way unless you're one of the people on the call and you have to tell the 60 people on the phone that you're voting a certain way. But that's just one of maybe the defaults of the hybrid scenario. But it is definitely increasing participation on all of these meetings in local, community, important topics. And we've heard lots and lots of feedback, but in order to make the most of everyone happy, the hybrid seems like the obvious option. And I've heard multiple times around our nation, it's, it's the future, it's hybrid meetings. Though, not that there's a perfect answer, but I also agree, Margaret, because I'm not always watching the chat. And then if, well, I'm never watching the chat, almost. But I look over and then there's like 10 comments that went by, but they are distracting from the meeting and not everyone can see them. So that would be an important agenda item to bring up in the coming future. But if we have more comments on this or anyone in the community, I would look for hands. Jennifer, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. One is that we, we do have the business of having to change our bylaws to make this happen. So I know that that's coming up later, but just to kind of acknowledge that. That step does need to happen. And then the other step that I would like to see happen again, and I think is what we were talking about before, is to poll the community again. And, you know, who knows, it might be possible that we have some community groups that choose to meet in person or to choose something. to meet in person or to choose something, something different. We, this doesn't have to be something that we decide for, I don't think, for all the committees. So I would like to see a poll, but to, it was interesting hearing the discussion coming into this because it wouldn't have occurred to me to include in the poll differentiating between the different committees. And I don't know if we want to do that or not, but, um, it, I hear Kevin's points about land use being a, a very different animal in a way than, and having different considerations than GBOS.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, Shannon, was your hand up? Would you like to add something? You're still muted.
Yes, thank you. Sorry. Um, yeah, some of the things that Jennifer just said answered some of the questions about whether it had to be every group. Is it everybody goes hybrid or some of them can stay in person, some can be hybrid? So I think Jen, Jen's questions were some of the similar ones to that, that I had.
Okay, great. Uh, Kyle, do you have any response to the previous two?
No, I really leave that to the committees to determine, you know, we'll, we'll follow direction as to where it goes.
Okay. I saw Kevin and Amanda and we are a little past six thirty. So two more items. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I see. I think Amanda had her hand up first.
Okay. I don't see it up right now, but go ahead, Amanda.
I'm all good. Sorry. I didn't mean to put my hand up. Thanks.
Okay. That got you, Kevin?
To Jennifer's point, I think that's a good idea to, uh, I guess poll the community once again. And perhaps we could do that through LUC by putting that on the agenda, you know, as a, a new business item or, you know, discussion. And then, you know, before we move off this topic, uh, one thing I'd like to discuss or, you know, even briefly is, um, you know, what people's thoughts are, uh, starting, you know, even in January, I know there'll be new elections, uh, or new potential, uh, committee members next month, but you know, when are we comfortable with, uh, having, uh, in-person meetings? And I don't know if there's, if we need to have the technology in place to have hybrid meetings, or if that's something that we could, um, initiate, you know, as soon as, uh, January. So that's just an open question that, you know, anybody out there.
Okay. Anyone would like to answer that before I go to the next hand? Kaylee, then Connie.
I was just going to, uh, voice my support for the idea of perhaps polling the individual subcommittees. But I would love to see that happen at the individual subcommittees versus through land use, as those attendance numbers and members would be different. Thanks.
Thank you, Kaylee. Connie, just, Ousmera.
Hi. I'm not sure if this is the right spot for me to say this, but I, we had trouble, uh, getting into the meeting. So I missed the public comment. I just wanted to invite everyone to our community meeting Wednesday night at six thirty. It will be on Zoom. We do have a presentation to make to you on Holton Hills. We will also have a live chat, uh, to answer questions. I would think that you would probably plan for an hour, uh, at the least, um, because we do have, um, Shelley, of course, from Heritage Land Bank that will be here. We also have, uh, Brandon Marcott from Triad, who is the lead civil engineer. Tony Hoffman from, uh, the Mute Company, who is an independent surveyor. You may have seen him out on site. Because he was out there doing the survey, uh, most recently. And then we have Natalie Smire, who is in charge of our homeowners, uh, association company. As well as myself and Charlotte Gaston, who enables all of this to occur and is a Realtor with Berkshire Hathaway Home Services. So, um, we look forward to visiting with all of you. Um, and if you would like to have a Zoom link, how's the best way, Charlotte, for them to, uh?
Uh, thank you, Connie. I think our staff has sent it to us, but they could probably include it in these minutes as well. And, uh, thank you for keeping it brief. And I'm sorry you missed it at the beginning.
I was.
We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question on this? Is it going to be recorded? Cause I know a couple of people have asked me and they're not able to make Wednesday even.
That is the plan to, uh, have it recorded. Um, you asked that question before, Mike, and, uh, I think it is important that if you can't attend the meeting, that you do have access to the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And thank you, Connie, for answering that. I also had the same question. Uh, all right. We'll go back to our agenda item. Jennifer and then Mike.
Uh, yeah, to Kevin's question or to, um, I also wanted to say we could use the doodle poll system again. I thought that worked pretty well before with some careful scrubbing of the questions. Um, we could even have different polls for different committees if that's like, to Kaylee's point, what people prefer. But it doesn't have to happen as a part of the meeting and it might be a way then to reach more people. Cause we really want, um, if you only poll the people who show up to the meeting, whether it's online or in person, then you automatically are polling only a subset.
Point taken. Thank you, Jen. For, um, Mike?
Jen stole my que- comment about selection bias. Um, but the other thing I was going to say is, uh, on the specifics of the, of the options, I would not be a fan of going to input, going back to in-person meetings only. I think that feels like a very retrograde step when we've had such a sort of expansive, attendance at these meetings. I think going back to in-person is gonna, is really gonna limit things in a way that it's gonna be hard to do, seeing the, seeing how well attended meetings have been in the past and seeing the, the wider, uh, participation. So as we go through, while I'm sure there might be some people who prefer in-person, if we can get the technology to work, I think that should be the path we go or keep them online. And that'll definitely be a, probably a fairly consistent theme when it comes to, you know, votes, of any votes I make on this topic or any comments I make on, on polls.
Thank you, Mike. I also meant to add in my comment about participation that, uh, some of the feedback we, we've were given that was not an A, B, or C option was written words saying people felt really involved in their community and they could do that while they were not commuting to a location and using a huge amount of their evening to be in one place. But they could still listen and participate when they were able, which was really important. Before I go to the next hand, is this something that we could put on an agenda in January? Or do we need a motion right now for the expense here? So we can move forward. Kyle?
I believe you have it on the agenda. See here, yes, uh, on number six tonight, old business, uh, there's discussion about it, uh, you know, talking about, uh, proposed changes to GBOS, but in the short term, under that topic, you guys could bring up approving the, because I think if anything, you have to know what you're getting into before you make these big changes. So I would, uh, I mean, for a staff perspective, we recommend investing in the technology so we can figure it out.
Right. Thank you. Uh, Kevin?
Yeah. And, uh, I agree with, uh, your point and Mike's point that, um, you know, the online meetings have been great for participation and, um, and I wouldn't want to move to in-person meetings with the exclusion of the online component. So I don't know if it's, uh, feasible, feasible or practical to have in-person meetings until we get the hybrid or the technology portion figured out to have the hybrid. And, and, uh, I guess Kyle, Margaret, that's a question I'd have for you. Is that like, do we want to hold off on having, in your opinion, hold off on having in-person meetings until we get the technology component figured out?
Uh, yes, it would be our recommendation that if we're going hybrid, let us get us technology so we can start to work this, this out.
Thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead, Diana.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, so I, my, my office also holds a lot of, um, public meetings. And, um, we are about to hold the first hybrid meeting, the second week in January. And so I, I might know more based on how, we've got a whole team of people trying to work on that. So I, I might be able to be more helpful after we've gotten through our lesson learned on our first ever hybrid meeting at that time.
Thank you, Diana. That's good outside information to know too. All of us are probably doing it in other realms of daily life. Um, before we go to number two on the agenda, I guess the takeaway we have here is to go to our separate committees and then keep it on the agenda and make motions to see how we can move, move into January and twenty twenty-two. Anyone on the phone? Okay. Number two, discussion of process to move items from new to old business.
Um, I don't know who, uh, brought this up, uh, but I think this has been an issue that we've dealt with for many years. And we're looking for a direction from the two committees. Basically, you know, you get a lot of people come in and, and you know, for example, a variance issue, and they're trying to figure out how to get their application through the process. And all of a sudden they realize they gotta get this in and they, and they need it to keep things moving along so they can pour a foundation before winter comes, whatever it may be. And they would, and so it needs to go to old business. Um, and we're looking for a clear direction on how to handle that, or at least let the committees handle it when it is in front of them for consideration.
Right. Thank you, Kyle. Shannon, your hand is up.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. I was the one that, um, asked for that to be added. Um, I just joined land use last year. Um, but I've seen it happen at land use and at trails where there's a lot of confusion when the question arises whether to move something to new business, um, from, sorry, from new business to old business. And I don't know if, I don't think that I'm the only person not clear on it because it seems to vary depending on the item on the agenda, how hard someone's pushing and what, um, group it's being proposed in. So I would definitely like clarification on that.
Thank you, Shannon. I, I'm sure many agree. We've all been there in those scenarios. Uh, let's go with Kevin and then Mike.
Thanks, Brianna. And, uh, yeah, I did agree with Shannon that, you know, it does seem, um, at least a component that's arbitrary to, you know, on a meeting, like meeting basis. Uh, one thing I would say sort of Kyle's point is, uh, when we have moved things from new business to old business so we can vote, it's almost always a time sensitive issue. Um, and, you know, there's variety of examples we, we can give. And, um, and I don't know if, if there's a way to, I guess, write this into the, or to codify it, but, you know, it could be the sort of thing where, uh, it's at the discretion of, of the committee, meaning, you know, the body, the LUC, uh, for, for LUC purposes. And, and I don't know exactly, you know, how that would work for GBOS if, you know, if the members of the, the GBOS would have to vote to say, yes, we're going to move this on to, to, uh, old business so we can vote on it. But that might be one way to address that issue.
Thanks, Kevin. Mike?
I've got a few points here. Um, the first one is that the, the split between old business and new business is not kind of a, I mean, although it's not unusual in a lot of meetings, it's not something, it's under Robert's rules. It's not something that's, uh, it always happens. I think it's, I'm not sure how it's ended up being something we always practice, but, um, in some cases, what it is, is kind of a residual from when some items had public hearings and some items didn't. And when you have a public hearing, you need to kind of decide, you know, formally state there's going to be a public hearing. And that goes through a two-meeting process of where you did, where you have the topic comes up, you announce there's going to be a public hearing, and then at least a month later, you have the public hearing. A lot of the stuff we end up having on the agenda twice, um, is stuff we could easily deal with in one meeting. So I think part of it is, it's just become, it's easier. If you say everything has to be on there twice, it's easier for setting up agendas. It's easier for running the meetings. It's not easier for people who have to present. So I think we've, we've created some unnecessary barriers by having a, um, by having everything in there twice. At the same time, it engages the community and everyone should have, you know, you have plenty of opportunity to find out about an issue, potentially have a presentation first, learn more about it, and then come back and have a more valuable discussion the second time. So I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing. It's just, I don't know if we're in the best place, um, having to do everything twice. My second point is that, um, I think we need to have at least a clear set of reasons why something should be, or why something, or a justification for why something would be moved. Uh, if we stick with everything going through twice, why something can be moved from, um, new business to old business. Time sensitivity is one of those. If the time sensitivity is not caused by the person petitioning. There are probably a couple of other items as well. Um, but that, that seems to be the main one. So I think it probably makes sense to articulate exactly what reasons would lead to the change. And the other thing is, there is a kind of general rule in, um, again, under Robert's rules, that for changes in the agenda, which I guess would include going from, a new business item and putting it straight to old business and acting on it, um, typically requires two-thirds majority. So what I'd suggest is we put into, you know, we put into our processes that any changes have to be two-thirds, not just majority. Which is a higher barrier, obviously, and have some set of clearly articulated reasons why it could be considered to move to, um, from new to old business as well. And then the other thing is, I think we need, we probably should review in general why we're doing this two-meeting process for everything. There my general comments.
Thank you, Mike. I agree with, uh, a lot of that, of course. Um, it just seems to be redundant, especially if, uh, you're on land use or you're on GBOS, you're already attending two meetings, so you hear it twice. And if you attend land use or the other committee, in addition, you hear it four times, uh, but the public may only get to hear it however many times that, uh, they're calling in. Um, so I think beside, uh, bylaws, it needs to be, like you said, Mike, uh, articulate reasonings within our committees. And bring it to the next joint meeting or before that. Um, anything else, Kyle or Margaret?
I would suggest that maybe they, this does get listed as business at the, uh, LUC and the GBOS for discussion and, and, um, you know, it, it, the, the different areas could, the different committees and GPS could do it the way they like, but it'd be nice if it was more uniform for our aspects. So, so we suggest that you, that they just get put on their agendas for the next meetings and, and maybe at the next joint meeting, come together and discuss what's been, um, created.
Yep. Anything else from anyone on the phone? Okay, we have eight or nine minutes on one of my clocks to go on to business item number three. Discuss land acknowledgement statement. Uh, this item, uh, Diana, your hand is up. It's been brought up a few times, but it's, feels like it's been a year since many of us attended the training with, uh, the expert in this in our state. And she offered, I recall, lots of assistance on the side. And I know many of us may have limited time, uh, to devote to something like this, but I'm anxious to hear from land use. So I'll let you begin, Diana.
Hey, thanks. And I feel like I honestly have probably dropped the ball on this since I think I volunteered to try to spearhead it and then just didn't have the time to devote to it. But the one thing that I have noticed in my own work meetings recently, um, I have watched, uh, land acknowledgement statement occur every time a, a certain person had presented to our council. And it was really simple. I'm wondering if maybe we're over complicating things. She had a, a really lovely map that was part of her PowerPoint that she would put up that, that showed all of the different indigenous regions. And then she provided a simple statement as to where she was per- currently presenting from. And an acknowledgement, it was a land acknowledgement of, of the general region and respect. And I, I'm wondering if maybe that would be a good way forward rather than prolonging kind of over complicating this. I, I'd be happy to try to draft what I saw, at least in, in my meetings as a proposal, um, to folks as something that we could maybe move forward with. to folks as something that we could maybe move forward with.
Great. Thank you, Diana. That sounds inspiring. And Kevin, do you have any response?
Um, yeah, I'd say that, you know, I, I like the idea of some, of something simple. And, you know, the little bit, again, it's been some months, but the little bit of research we did into it after Melissa Shaganoff's presentation was, you know, that specific to the Girdwood Valley or Glacier Valley, you know, the, you know, it's sort of like a, how would you call it? You know, a sort of an in-between space. And so it was a little bit difficult to describe the, the land as being, you know, belonging to one group or another. And so we kind of stalled out on that. And then one thing I would add, too, is that, you know, this has come up a while ago. And I, from my side of things, have really not heard anything from the community that has, you know, asked for this. And since, you know, that came up almost a, you know, a year ago or 10 months ago. And, and I guess I'd ask people out there, you know, if, if anyone else has heard people from the community request it or even ask about a land acknowledgement.
Thanks. Mike?
Um, I think I've had a few people comment on the lack of land acknowledgement and contrast that with other meetings I've been to when it's, you know, always, when it's always part of the, the formality of the meeting and sort of sets the agenda and sets the structure. I like the, I think the reason, I like the idea of something very simple. I also like the idea of something very specific to, to our physical location. And, I mean, maybe the answer is something like, you know, acknowledging that it's transitional land between two peoples. And there was some work, I think I mentioned this in our last meeting, there, there was some work which led to one of the trail signs at the bottom of Caryolis, which describes something of the history of the valley and the histories of its occupation. So if we can leverage the work that's already been done there and just find a sort of a very brief, one-sentence summary of it, I think that'd be really helpful. I can't remember who, Kyle, I think you mentioned who'd done that work before.
Miss Kate and Barb.
Right.
Kate Samberg.
Barb Cruz.
Right. I wonder if we could just reach out to Kate and Barbara and just see if they can make a, a suggestion for a very brief summary of the, at least the historical occupation of the place.
Thank you, Mike. Kaylee and then Jennifer. And then we're running out of time.
I just wanted to quickly support the idea of combining perhaps the research that Kate and Barb did for the Lower Iditarod National Historic Trail and Diana's idea of sort of a more simplified that, and I love the idea of the map. I think that is pretty neat. So I, I think we can sort of get this done with those two pieces. But that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just, yeah, sorry. I just wanted to actually say that I would support Kevin's comments about wanting to make sure that this is coming both from a certain, both from community drive and also historical. I understand this idea of let's just keep it simple, but let's also not leapfrog over some other considerations.
Thank you. Kaylee, is your hand up again?
Just quickly, didn't we, I thought we voted on this through land use to do it. Am I incorrect about that? I'm just trying to remember the history, that's all. Or maybe we can explore the history to answer that question, but.
It was land use from what I recall months back because of.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Shannon?
I was going to say the same thing. That's what I recall as well, that we discussed it at land use. And I thought we voted on it, at least to start the process.
That was my, my understanding. So it feels, feels like that, you know, we did vote to move forward with it. But perhaps we didn't actually vote. Not sure.
If I remember right on the history, I think it was suggested at land use and it became an agenda item and it's been carried since, so.
Thank you, Kyle. Well, it sounds like a, a good productive discussion and great ideas for business item number three. I'd like to give us a minute or two before GBOS starts. So thank you all for attending. Happy solstice. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Unless there's anything else. Mike?
Yeah, I did, is there an action from that, from item number three? Because I feel there should be. I think we've had this discussion for a long while and we've kind of left it without any specific actions.
Correct.
So can we identify something specific to do here?
Diana?
Could I volunteer to provide a presentation to the land use committee in January in response to this? In which I could try to compile some of the information from Barb and the Lower Iditarod information with my colleagues, land use acknowledgement and the map, and just provide that to the land use committee. And they could vote to acknowledge it because I think that's where it came from in terms of adopting it.
The action sounds great, Diana. Anyone else satisfy Mike?
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Wait a second?
I'd second that.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right. See you, Bri.
Thank you, Brianna.
Thanks.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thanks, everyone.